At this time, we will begin our meeting. We're going to ask Ms. Steelers, you call the Board of Supervisors to order.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orth?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
And Mr. Nikosia is not. You have a quorum.
Sorry, can you call roll for the EDA, please?
Yes. Mr. Riley?
Yeah.
Mr. Houts? Mr. Meeker? Mr. Bars? Mr. Van Lewen?
Here.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Mr. Earwood?
At this time, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Yes, we do.
Yes. Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment period. We ask that you limit your topics on the agenda only, limit your topics to the agenda only. And please limit your minutes to, your time to three minutes or less. Anyone like to address the board? Limit it to the topics on the agenda only.
So I'd like to address that. I spoke to Phil this afternoon where he invited me to come here and speak to the board. And that is why I showed up and came here. So I would like to be able to address the board about an issue that's not on the agenda as I was invited here by one of the supervisors to do so. And I'd just like to remind the board that the county attorney works for you. You don't work for him. So if you want to allow me to speak, you certainly can allow that.
Mr. Chair, you may allow him to speak, but your rules indicate he's not allowed to.
I was invited here by a member on the board.
Mr. Chow?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Irwin?
Yes.
Okay, three minutes.
Okay. So I own a property on Zack Road purchased in 2022. It is a wooded property, eighty-five acres. In 2023, we had the U.S. Department of Forestry approve us to timber ten acres of the property, which we did. The aftermath of that project left a lot of debris and unusable ground. The whole purpose of that project was to create a field usable area for my family to enjoy. At that point, we had the debris removed from the ground, which has in turn caused an issue with the Department of Environmental, Gloucester's environmental people. They have caused hardship that is unnecessary. They have trespassed on the property in the enforcement of the issues. The most recent was last week where we have it documented that they entered the property without permission. I've been told many different things. And at this point, what I am looking for is for the board, as well as the county attorney, to step up, to move away from this issue, and to absolve us of what the county is pursuing. It is incredibly unfortunate, the way the county has decided to pursue this, which is why I'm here. And according to the county's own maps, a majority of the property that was cleared is not part of the wetlands, was not impacted wetlands. But they have still stood firm in trying to penalize and fine us. And I don't believe that to be fair, ethical, or just. We're not developing property. We're not putting in apartments. We're not putting in a strip center. We merely timbered legally and removed the debris after the fact, leaving an open field. So nothing has been hurt. The wetlands were not quote-unquote destroyed. The bay has not been negatively impacted. According to the Department of Forestry, when they came out, the property looks amazing. It's fantastic. Everything is stabilized. There's no soil or silt leaving the property. It's now a space that my family can enjoy. And then according to Gloucester's own mapping, which is on the gloucester.gov, it shows per their mapping, there were no wetlands where we cleared, which is the mapping that we went off of, which is what I have here. And I'm happy to provide any of you copies of that, or you can pull it from the website because it's still there. So I'd really like the board's help in addressing this issue and allowing my family to move forward from this issue. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments for tonight? Okay, no public comments. Then we'll move on to our work session. But before we move on to our work session, I noticed we have some guests in the back. I'd like to acknowledge them. You want to tell us who you are? True. Come up this way. Come up to the mic, tell us who you are.
Hello, we're Troop One Eleven. Hi, we're Troop One Eleven. Um, we're doing a mirror bed right now, and we're just here to listen.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Huh? Yeah.
Oh, good. You should get an extra one for speaking.
I wish.
Do we get one?
Yeah.
We're glad you guys are here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we move on to our work session agenda. First up is our retail update. Ms. Spring?
Thank you. I've got an interesting update. We did a lot of research to be able to provide this to you tonight, and I found it very interesting, and hopefully you will too. Gloucester currently has fourteen shopping centers that's got 1.5 million square feet in them. Right now, there's a hundred and four thousand five hundred and ninety-seven square feet that's available in twenty-seven units. These units range from a thousand square feet to thirty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine square feet. And that larger one is the empty Big Lots, the former Big Lots space. Fox Mill has forty-nine acres that are remaining for retail development. I thought it was a lot more than that, but it's forty-nine acres. And York River Crossing has seven acres remaining for retail development. So we've got a pretty good inventory. It'd be nice if we had some bigger units, but it is what it is. In terms of our marketing efforts, we're a member of three different associations that are restaurant and retail. We attend the International Council of Shopping Center Trade Show once a year. We also attend the Seafood Expo North America Trade Show. And even though it's seafood, there's hotel chains and also restaurants that attend that show. So that's one of the reasons. And also, we go to support our local aqua culture businesses here in Gloucester. We also use social media, website, and direct mail. When we go to these trade shows, we do have, we make cold calls. We don't make appointments before we go. We make telephone calls and also send out emails when we get leads that are generated from the associations that we're a member of. Site selection criteria for the major chains, which is Costco, BJ's, Sam's, Target, Trader Joe's. Unfortunately, all of them require between seventy-five and two-hundred thousand people or population in a three- to five-mile radius. And so we don't have the demographics. Unfortunately, we just don't have the demographics. And I don't know that we would want to have a hundred thousand residents in a three-mile radius in Gloucester. And that's exactly what Trader Joe's requires. We do have the median income. We just don't have the population. So that's kind of what we're missing. And I've also found out that a lot of these prefer to do conversions instead of a ground-up. So the conversion would be a Big Lots that's available right now. I've heard from several people that there's like three different big boxes that are interested in going into the former Costco building that's going to be moving out over in Newport News already because they have the, they have the product, they have the building there. The good news is, one of the fastest-growing steak houses in the mid-Atlantic right now is Longhorn Steakhouse. And I think that's probably among some of the top possibilities as a future new steakhouse, finally, in Gloucester. They require a hundred thousand population within a primary trade area. And our primary trade area in the middle peninsula is about eighty-nine thousand people. So we're not far from that. So I think there's going to be one of those in the future. Some of the fastest-growing retailers, and proud to say that Gloucester has three of the five, which is Aldi's, Ollie's, Aldi, and Wawa. And the one that we don't have yet but has shown an interest in Gloucester is Five Below. So Five Below would be a good fit for, well, in my opinion, a good fit for the former Big Lots building. And also, one that's growing right now is Harbor Freight. It could possibly be another opportunity. Any questions?
Just one. I sent out an email on some questions. I think you've answered all of them except just a clarification on the one on the digital presence and promotion. What is the EDA doing to take advantage of any kind of, let's say, artificial intelligence marketing, you know, digital marketing to get ourselves aware from these companies maybe getting interested in coming to Gloucester County?
We're not actually doing any digital marketing now, but I've got an appointment next week with Virginia Business Magazine to talk about digital marketing.
There you go. Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Spring? There are no other questions for Ms. Spring. We'll move on to be in our agenda, water and sewer north of Gloucester Courthouse. Mr. Ramsey?
Water and sewer north of the courthouse is probably the biggest item that, from my involvement with development in the county, seems to be the number-one issue that a lot of the new folks coming over here kind of lose interest in coming here. Just the unavailability of water and sewer short of what's below the courthouse on Route Seventeen. Unfortunately, the bulk of those properties are either infill or small. So any new development that requires a little bit larger piece of property, there's not a whole lot of opportunity for them to come to the county. So if you're looking for additional economic development to come here, we kind of have to give them what folks are looking for for some of the larger, if you want to try to get some of these larger businesses in here. So it's not a request, it's just more a statement of information based upon all the work that I do in the development sector that I thought may be of interest to you. That being said, like, it's really just more an FYI. I'm going to go through these relatively quickly because most of them came from, you know, our group, and they're really informative rather than necessarily a lengthy discussion. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. The next item, I don't want the board to reflect that this is a private homeowner-issue RMA/RPA. This is a county-wide issue, and this actually speaks to me more to what I'm going to call the infill properties in the county. There's a lot of folks who come who want to get a simple development done on their property. And due to the RMA overlay, if we disturb over twenty-five hundred square feet, we're going through a site plan process, which just elongates the review and approval, makes it more complicated, involves some governmental agencies that could be avoided for smaller projects, and certainly is tying up county staff on smaller projects when we have much larger things that they could be spending their time on. So allowing some of the existing infrastructure to develop up to ten thousand square feet of disturbance, I think is something worth looking at. It's a, the middle of economic development, which is, in a lot of cases, is the broadest spectrum that we have. I mean, granted, we have a few large shopping centers, but beyond that, we have a lot of small commercial properties that find it economically infeasible to do these major site plans and deal with, you know, VDOT and some of the other things that I think we could reduce if that was investigated. Again, I know it's been brought up before, but I just wanted to bring it back to your attention. The last item is the fact that we are growing still. There's a lot of development in the county. The staffing that the county has, albeit they're all very, very cooperative, and I like working with every one of them. I do get a lot of feedback from some of my development clients that things take too long. And I think it's because we're growing and we are lacking in staff. And it's just my hope that you guys help Carol make sure she has the staffing she needs, because it's hard to draw good economic folks when they go, gee, it's going to take forever to get my plans approved, you know, let's just go somewhere else. So just from that standpoint, helping Carol, I guess, get the funds she needs to not only hire enough people, but, you know, people with good quality backgrounds to help us in the economic development side. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Any questions concerning, yes, sir?
So you were right that we did discuss the RMA/RPA thing, but I've always said in near the center of the county where there's no, as long as there's not any wetlands or anything like that, you know, you should, developers should be able to go in there and disturb soil greater than twenty-five hundred square feet without having to go through the bureaucracy of site planning. I can understand it if you're near the water. That makes perfect sense. But when you're near the center of the county and there's no water to be found anywhere near that or any wetlands, you know, I've always been a, anyway, we should look at that.
Mr. Hudson?
Appreciate the comments, but I look at it that that could have been an email. What is the EDA? What would they like to see from the board other than working with staff, looking at the RPA, RMA overlays? But what are the things that we could work together that would be needed from y'all's point of view, from our point of view? How those, let's look at those things while we're all here together, because we don't meet, this is only the second time we've met since I've been on the board together. So I think we need to bring open discussion there and not just go over those topics.
Discussion. We'll go back up to, let's see, we had the retail update. We'll go back to the water and sewer growth in North County.
Do you have a specific question, Mr. Hudson? Or you just want me to?
No, I don't have a, I mean, that's where I'm sitting there saying, let's go, these topics, let's go into them a little more.
Our group has discussed at length various options since now we're basically coming to the conclusion of the business park. Where can the EDA, since that's been the primary focus, I think of this group for probably the past forty years, you know, where do we go from here? And there's been discussion about trying to evaluate the Route Seventeen corridor, and how could the EDA maybe take a look at some of these, I guess, less-than-attractive properties that might need some assistance getting developed? And we're open to doing that. But by the same token, that's helping existing economic development. We're also looking at trying to attract additional economic development. And that's the other component is, we're not going to track those predominantly south of the courthouse, but I think we could if we go north. Kind of hard for us to put a plan together for that if the Board of Supervisors is not open to the fact that maybe we should look at expanding the water and sewer system. If you decide no, then we'll probably start spending more of our time looking at some of the areas south where we can try to improve the corridor. The rest of the stuff is, again, just trying to make it easier for folks who are here to improve their businesses, maybe expand it a little bit, hire a few more folks, have, you know, improve their revenues, which increases tax base to the county. So I'm just looking at what we can do on a smaller scale that would help benefit the county's return on a tax investment. Beyond that, without a clear picture from the Board of Supervisors, how they're going to develop the county. I know you've got the new comp plan coming out. So, you know, until we get a little more direction from you guys, it's kind of hard for us to focus, but we're happy to collaborate if you have some specific items that you'd like to see happen, you know, bring to the table. You've got a good group on the board. You know, we'll be happy to take a look at any of it.
Ms. Steel, maybe you could answer this question. How far does the water and sewer go north into the county?
So the water goes to Spring Hill, Spring Hill Farm Road?
Yep.
On the?
About a third of the way.
East side. So it goes up a little bit, you know, past?
Halfway to Ark Park.
Oh, halfway to Ark Park.
Okay. And then the sewer stops at basically the Food Lion. So currently, the, we've talked to the board about your comp plan, and this is something Ms. Ducey Ortiz has talked about, the comp plan shows a development area that is beyond the existing Hampton Road sanitation district, district. So it's not up to Ark, it's just a little bit further north. And so you're, you're kind of, the things are not in sync. And in order for the district to be extended to allow that, what the previous comp plan said should be a developed area, the board would need to request for HRSD to take that area in. And we've, you know, staff's had conversations with them. I don't think that's going to be any problem at all. The issue is that the developing businesses would still need to do the hookup. And as you're aware, Ms. Legg has talked about changing the plans, the ten-year plans. We have a pump station there, and there's a lot that's directed to the east, and we're talking about going to the west and making the pump station, which is really a lift station at Food Lion, into a pump station. So all those things are planned for, which would help with this additional small area of development. What Mr. Ramsey is referring to is more like if you wanted to in the next update of the comp plan to extend even further. And that would also need to, I think you'd want to look at the zoning of the area. I've noticed that there's a number of one-house developments that have been happening, just like one-offs if you drive north of the courthouse. And I'm not sure who all's involved in those, but there's been some of those. And, you know, if there's going to be business development, is there an area that you want to designate for that before more homes are right there? And then you've got the issue of having businesses and homes side by side.
I just want to make sure you understand one thing. I'm not recommending that that's what we do. I'm just letting you know that the bulk of the folks looking to develop would like that. So if that's something that the board is interested in seeing happen, that's what's holding some of it back, just so you understand.
Trying to generate discussion.
Fair enough.
Mr. Ramsey, how far, how much further north of the water connection now are people looking? I mean, you're probably into this a little bit more than I am because you're dealing with these folks daily, monthly. I mean, what kind of distances? Because everything like this comes with a price. So we, we can't, I mean, that's one of the biggest things I've ever said for the EDA is, if we're not going to give you a whole bunch of money to do a whole bunch of different things, it's, we're sort of limping this thing along. You know, an idea of where we're looking and how far we need to go would be beneficial as we go through the comp plan as well.
The bulk of them, I would say, are within a mile of where the hospital is. But there has been some interest a little farther north of that. But I think if you work on the first mile, you're covering the bulk of it.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. And for the discussion, anybody? Yes?
I'm happy to generate a topic. One of the things that we talked about in the agenda-setting meeting was looking at Gloucester Point. And again, I think the EDA can take on lots of different kinds of projects if they have that direction from the board. And so I had a conversation, in fact, after our meeting with one of the EDA members saying, you know, that the idea of an EDA or an IDA buying or holding on to property for twenty, thirty years to see what gets developed and trying to market, that that kind of is just not where, it's not being done. It's not fruitful. On the other hand, if there are particular parcels that the board would like to see how they are developed, and it goes, you know, back again, looking to the comp plan, it could be that there are certain sites in Gloucester Point that could be purchased and to facilitate the development of the sites. And I think, Ms. Spring, do you think it's okay to discuss the one place that is for sale right now, even though they don't have a sign out, but they're? So the motel at Gloucester Point is for sale. And we've talked to a number, Ms. Spring's been working with the owners who are interested in selling, and I think our interest is we'd like to see a nicer, not a nicer, but larger and new hotel at that area, which would sort of go into this gateway as you come into the county. You've got Vams, you've got a nice hotel, there's people.
Ms. Steel? Ms. Steel, I know, I hate to do this, but can we just save that for?
Absolutely. So I'll just end real quick that if the board would like to see the EDA do projects like that, I think that's what that discussion part would be, you know, if you'd like to see that done.
Yes, sir.
What about the page site? Is there anything that you guys are contemplating with that particular piece of property?
Well, we've had, and I wish we'd had more, but we've had one project that came in that you all are aware of early on. Then we had another project that I was really hoping was going to happen. It was a container house manufacturer out of Louisiana. And I thought, I think we got really, really close to that. And then like in the eleventh hour, he said that they decided to go to Idaho. And I have never in my thirty years in economic development lost anything to Idaho. But anyway, that happened. But I did get a, I did get a call the other day from a commercial broker, or, you know, a commercial broker that said that he had a developer that he would like to bring in to look at it. And he asked for the video and the marketing materials and the plaits and everything for it, so.
And see, that's where I was going to go with Mr. Bizani, is I would like to see something happen at that location so that we can then look at the other opportunities for taking on more properties. At this point in time, I don't, I don't think the county or the EDA owning a whole lot of property is doing us much good unless we're going to invest in these properties and then start building some of these facilities so these businesses, and I'll say businesses, want to come here. Because the lack of inventory is our biggest problem here in the county, which is what has stifled economic development and which is one of the reasons why I recommend that we remove ourselves from the Hampton Roads EDA some years ago. I think that's where our focus needs to be, is getting that property to a state where it can be moved in the most profitable fashion that we can.
Well, I agree with you on that. And one thing that I plan to do after the new budget starts is to do a much nicer brochure on the page site that they can go to a link to the video. They can also get all the demographics and everything in one handout. So when I go to the seafood show, when I go to the International Workboat Show, I've got something I can hand out that says, not only is this the page site, this is Gloucester. So I think that would be a good investment, good use of. So I think that would be a good investment, good use of our funds, our marketing funds that we have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So with the advent of the Coleman Bridge tolls coming off, it seems to me that, you know, most of these businesses would rethink Gloucester County because we are going to see some significant growth because of that. We saw it in the past, and I would suspect it would repeat itself again now. And that, you know, if they choose to miss the boat and not think strategically with this county, that we are going to be growing significantly. There'll be development and other things coming in. But they may want to change their criteria to grow into their criteria, right? Relax the criteria and grow into the criteria they're looking for, like, like you said, Costco and BJ's and all those other big box stores that say, hey, we're anticipating huge growth and we want to start early. So maybe we want to identify that to them. Say, hey, you know, we're no tolls and we were the fastest-growing county in Virginia at one time because of the toll removal. So we might have another opportunity here.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Bazani, I don't think the county's in a position based on the comp plan and what we've done with Planning Commission the last few times. We're not going to have a lot of development or increased population coming in the way we're currently doing things. If it's the board's desire to grow the county, we need to make some changes. We've had one, the Planning Commission voted a housing development down at the last meeting. We've got two more coming up. And right now, I would say that those two will get voted down then. So, but as a board, we need to say we're either welcoming the developments or we don't want the developments. Because the Planning Commission right now is almost at the point where we need to watch where any development goes. And with the developments, we need to make sure that the infrastructure is there to take care of it.
I agree with you to a certain extent, but I wouldn't want to see a train coming our way and then all of a sudden, the train goes off and we haven't done anything to anticipate the train coming. And that's my only point.
Okay. Dr. Orth?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So two things. And this came up at the hearing that we had for the data center. A woman stood up and mentioned something about her tourist business and that she said she was getting queer bees that she couldn't handle. And that, I know, you know, given Gloucester's position in this triangle, which should include now Gloucester with all of the historical stuff, the idea of a tourist-based industry is something that I think would be very welcome because these are people that come, visit, spend money, and leave. So, and the second thing is, and maybe you can address this, Ms. Spring, is aquaculture. You know, it's an incredibly interesting industry that VIMS has taken a great interest in itself. What are you seeing from what current industry we have here in the county? And are, do you see any impediments for businesses that come that might want to expand? You know, we had that issue with the pump-out issue with one facility down in Browns Bay, which I think we've resolved, right? The one that's in Browns Bay with the pump-out issue? With the Pump and Hall?
Yes, we've resolved that and we've renewed it as well.
Right, right. So I think, you know, to me, there should be, you know, ways to expand, you know, the aquaculture areas here in Gloucester just because we have so much waterway. Now, obviously, some of the bottoms are in bale grounds, and that's another issue that we have to be very careful about. But if you look at just that one industry that expanded, that uses the Browns Bay facility, it's pretty impressive. And I know Congress Whitman was here about a year ago with a committee of people looking at the impediments that the industry itself has in terms of now especially attracting and having the workers that they need to deal with all of the aspects of the different fisheries.
I think the plan right now is for aquaculture to grow in the community. I had about a 30-minute discussion today with some people from the Department of Agriculture and one of our local aquaculture companies. And they're really pushing to increase the cold storage here in the county. And that would bring other aquaculture companies from like Lancaster and some other areas to come into Gloucester. So that would be new capital investment. That would be job creation there. So I think it's going to happen.
Mr. Hudson?
But I think you're looking at two different things. I think, are we looking at drawing new citizens to the county that are going to stay and thrive and live here? Are we going to attract pandas who are just going to eat shoots and leaves? I mean, we need to figure out what we want. Do we want the tourists that just come in overnight and leave? Or do we want the citizens? Or do we want both? But that's where I think the board, and I've said this for years, the board needs to figure out what we want so then we can give guidance to the EDA, to tourism, to planning, to everybody else. And I think the board needs to make the decision on how we want to see it. If we want the county to grow, the toll's coming off, it gives us an opportunity. If we want it to stay where it is, keep it where it is. But I think that's a decision that the board has to make.
I think that we could use a good balance of both.
I think right now, we're going to be limited with growth.
And, you know, remember, Ms. Steel presented us with the maps and all of the documentation that showed the amount of Gloucester area that was actually buildable, correct? It wasn't a lot. And then, of course, the amount of area that we could have that's accessible to water and sewer.
But that was growth with the current restrictions on acreage. We didn't take into account changing acreage restrictions or anything else for growth.
And that's the same thing with regard to land use. A lot of people have their property in land use. And, you know, we don't know what people are thinking about with regard to having or selling their land into a development property.
Any further discussion? No further discussion? Want anything to discuss, to talk about tonight? You good, Mr. Ramsey?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. No further discussion. That means we have one thing left. And, Mr. Ramsey, you can start that off.
I vote that we adjourn this meeting.
Okay. That's for your board. That's for your board.
Chair, can you call the board? Yes.
Board of Supervisors, okay, second? All in favor? Aye, okay.